Hi, Mr. Chapel. Can you hear us, Mr. Cole?
I can hear you.
Hey, Rick.
I can hear you.
Quick. Hi, Mr. Cole. You can hear us in the room? Super. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Bard, can you hear us? Perfect. Thank you.
Loud and clear.
All right. Thank you. Chairperson Sylvan, we have all the board members present.
Great. All right. So I have 2:30. Nina, do you want to start the recording?
Yes.
Let me know. Are you ready?
Oh, I'm ready. Sorry. Yeah, I started.
All right. This is a special meeting of the Arizona State Land Department Board of Appeals. I'm calling the meeting to order on October 8, 2024, at 2:30 p.m. First item on the agenda is roll call. Nina?
Chairperson Sylvan?
Here.
Vice Chair Chapel?
Here.
Mr. Bard?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Francis?
Here.
Great. Are there any board members who wish to declare a conflict of interest or who wish to recuse themselves for any matter on the agenda?
Chairman Sylvan, this is Bruce Francis. In light of my employment by CBRE Capital Markets, even though I believe there's no conflict, as an abundance of caution, I will recuse myself from this matter.
Great. Well, that's not great, but I understand. Because this is the only item on the agenda, Dina, would you... Are we... Is Bruce excused from the meeting at this point or does he just stay on and listen and not vote?
No, I think he would refrain from participating in the meeting and would be excused at this point.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Good luck. Great to see everybody.
Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Thanks. So we are here today to consider the update discussion and potential action regarding Farmers Investment Company, Save the Scenic Santa Rita Association versus the Arizona State Land Department Board of Appeals. It's case number CV 2024-001259, including consideration of legal options in light of the court's September 9, 2024 decision. This board will discuss and may vote to ratify its December 8, 2022, approval of the Rosemont Copper Right-of-Way valuation, which is application number 14-123251 pursuant to state law, ARS 38-431.05B, as in void. A detailed written description and other information about the action that may be ratified, together with all exhibits, were made part of the meeting agenda, and I'm going to go ahead and read those for the record. And again, these were part of the agenda. First, on December 8, 2022, the board voted to approve the consent agenda, including the valuation of the Rosemont Copper Right-of-Way, the application number 14-133251. That was also attached as Exhibit A to the agenda. That vote was memorialized in minutes approved by the board on January 12, 2023. Those were also attached to the minutes as Exhibit B. After litigation, a court found that the agenda and minutes for the December 8, 2022 meeting did not comply with the open meetings law because the description of the Rosemont Right-of-Way application did not state that a tailings pipeline was a possible use of the right-of-way and the number of pipelines was understated. And again, that was attached as Exhibit C to the agenda. A complete copy of the Rosemont Copper Right-of-Way application is also attached to the agenda. A complete copy of the appraisal for the Rosemont Copper Right-of-Way, comprised of the external appraisal and the internal review by State Land Department, was also attached. With this additional information, the board will consider whether or not to ratify its approval of the Rosemont Copper Right-of-Way valuation. The board's only focus today is to consider the appraised value of the right-of-way and to decide whether to ratify our prior action. The board does not decide whether or not to grant a right-of-way. That is the decision of the Arizona State Land Department. Therefore, today, we are not considering whether to continue or to revoke the right-of-way. The focus is on the valuation. Similarly, the board does not have jurisdiction over and we are not expert... Its environmental focus is on the appraised value of the right-of-way and not on any other aspects of the right-of-way or the Rosemont copper mine. The board is required by law to approve the department's valuations in certain circumstances, such as when the State Land Department is proposing to sell land or to issue a commercial lease for more than 10 years. There is no statute requiring the board to review or approve the Arizona State Land Department's right-of-way appraisals, such as the one at issue here. The Arizona State Land Department Commissioner has the statutory duty to appraise state land for grants of rights-of-way, among other purposes. As the court concluded in its September 9, 2024 decision, the State Land Department Commissioner also has discretion to seek the board's assessment expertise regarding the department's valuations of rights-of-way and the board acts within its lawful authority when, at the commissioner's request, it reviews and approves right-of-way valuations. On December 8, 2022, the board considered the Rosemont Copper Right-of-Way valuation not because the board was required to do so by statute, but because the State Land Department asked for our advice. Today, we are considering whether to ratify our prior action approving the valuation. The open meetings law does not require a public body, such as the board, to allow members of the public to comment or opine on their proposed actions. The open meetings law only requires that the public be allowed to attend and listen to the deliberations of the public body. There's no other law that requires public comment in this matter either, and the judge did not order it. Accordingly, while the board does not ordinarily receive public comment on its decisions and will not be doing so in the future, we are making an exception for this hearing because it arises from litigation. Therefore, out of an abundance of caution, we are allowing a public comment at this ratification meeting, even though it's not required by law or the court's order. As a reminder, the scope of the board's consideration is limited to deciding whether to ratify the prior action. The board is only focused on valuation of the right-of-way, not on any other matter related to state lands' decision to grant the right-of-way. I do want to acknowledge that the board has received and reviewed emails and written comments from numerous individuals and organizations. These written comments will be attached to the board's minutes for this meeting. The comments received by the board include the following. An October 7, 2024 letter to the board from Thomas Nelson, president of Save the Scenic Santa Rita's and Nan Stockholm-Walden Council to Farmers Investment Company. There's a 9/26/2024 letter to Governor Hobs from Rob Peters of Save the Scenic Santa Rita's, which is joined by some legislators and several environmental organizations. A September 26 letter from Javier Del Rio, senior vice president of HUDB. A September 26 letter to the board from Harvey Schulman, lawyer. We have received approximately 300 emails from citizens urging the board not to ratify the prior action because of concerns about the underlying decision of the State Land Department to grant the right-of-way, which, as I've said before, is not this board's purview. The order we have... And we've received and reviewed all of those documents. Here's how we're going to handle the meeting order as we go through this. So as stated earlier, the board and the public have been provided with the application and the appraisal of the Rosemont Copper Right-of-Way from 2022. Our focus is solely on the assessed valuation, not any other issues involving the mine or the right-of-way. We will first hear from the State Land Department and see if the board has any questions for State Land Department representatives. And then I will open it up for public comment. I'll discuss the protocols for the public comment in a minute. We will then close the comments. The board will deliberate and may have questions for state land representatives or others who have addressed the board or who have indicated they are willing to do so. At any point during the meeting, the board may vote to go into executive session to receive legal advice from its council, as authorized by state law. After public comment and board discussion has concluded, we will vote on whether or not to ratify our prior action. So here are the protocols for public comment. One person, please, per organization or group. Please clearly state your name and organization or group, if any, for the record. We're allocating three minutes... ...per person made by others or in your written comments, which the board has received and reviewed. As the chair, I may limit comments further if needed to move the meeting along. We have a few people who have requested to speak ahead of the meeting, and I will call on those folks first. Then we will ask that if you're online and want to speak, please use the raised hand function, and we will call on you. I won't say in the order that you raise your hand because we probably won't be able to follow that, but we will work to get to everybody. If you are there in person, please actually raise your hand. Nina, who is there, will let us know and we will recognize you. Again, we ask you that you keep in mind our purview today is only the valuation, and please do not duplicate comments. And just for the record, I did mention the September 26 letter to the board from Harvey Schulman was submitted, and we have reviewed it. So thank you. With that, I'm going to ask that if there's a representative from state land here, and do you wish to address the board first? Yeah, Rick?
I just saw a comment from Harvey that he indicated that he had submitted a letter dated October 8, and he just wanted to make certain that that had been disseminated to the group. I received a copy of it, but I thought just to have a clear record, we should at least address his concern.
Yes, I apologize. I got the date wrong. It's that we do have the October letter as well, and it was transmitted to the board. Thanks, Rick. I thought I was clarifying that, but I got the date wrong. Thank you. So is anyone from the State Land Department?
Chairman Sylvan, this is Jim Perry from the State Land Department. We don't have a statement at this time, but we're happy to answer your questions as the meeting progresses.
Let me ask board members before we go into the public comment. Do you have any specific questions of the State Land Department or you want to do the public comment first? Public comment first is what I'm seeing. Okay. So we will now proceed with the public comment. As a reminder, one person per organization or group. Please clearly state your name and organization or group for the record. I will be timing three minutes per person. Please do not duplicate comments made by others or in your written comments. And again, I have the purview to be able to limit comments as we move through this. We'll first call on those who have requested to speak in advance. Others, again, raise your hand as I indicated for either using the raise-hand function or physically raising your hand. The two folks who I have who are interested in speaking, first is Rob Peters, the executive director of Save the Scenic Santa Rita's Association.
Where are you speaking from?
Oh, right there. They're at the microphone. Yeah.
I didn't know if they needed to see me, if I needed to sit somewhere.
Cameras are over there.
Okay. Okay, Chairman Sylvan and members of the board. My name is Rob Peters. My name is Rob Peters, executive director of Save the Scenic Santa Rita's. I'm here today representing the plaintiffs in the open meetings lawsuit. Our written comments clearly lay out the reasons why we request that you take no action today to ratify the open meetings law violation and why today's agenda fails to comply with ARS 38-431.05. Based on the evidence, we don't believe the board members knew that they were violating the open meetings law, but instead, the evidence shows that land department staff withheld material information from the board and the public prior to the December 8, 2022, public meeting that led to the open meetings violation. Staff then made material handwritten changes to the right-of-way section recommendation after it was approved by the board. Staff changed the number and type of pipelines allowed in the right-of-way, thereby opening the way for mine-tailing pipelines. These unauthorized changes were then incorporated in the right-of-way the department issued to Toronto-based High-Paid Minerals Copper World subsidiary on January 30, 2023. Why did the staff do this? We don't know why the staff did this, but today, we call on the board and the attorney general to find out. We believe a formal investigation is necessary to restore public confidence that the board's official actions are not later secretly changed by department staff. This was not just another routine right-of-way that the board typically approves on its consent agenda without discussion. This right-of-way has profound implications for state trust lands and should have been held to much greater scrutiny. The right-of-way is the linchpin in Copper World's plans to construct a series of open-pit copper mines that will destroy the northern half of the Santa Rita Mountains. The right-of-way allows Copper World to avoid executing its original plan to seek a right-of-way through federal land, which would have triggered NEPA analysis. So to avoid this, the company made a strategic decision to turn to state lands. Indeed, the board approved the right-of-way section. Indeed, the Board approved the right-of-way section recommendation with no environmental and economic impact studies of the massive negative effect that the nation's third-largest open-pit copper mining complex would have on the Santa Rita Experimental Range and other state trust lands. The Experimental Range, incidentally, is required by state law to be operated for ecological and range research, not to support mining activity. World sent an email to department staff moments after the Board approved the right-of-way, exclaiming, "This is, quote, 'super huge.'" This right-of-way would be a huge financial windfall for Copper World, but an unmitigated disaster for state trust lands. The State Land Department and this Board work for the people of Arizona, not Copper World, and the Board needs to act to put an end to this type of malpractice. We request that the Board take no action to ratify the open-meeting law violation and let the 30-day ratification window expire. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Peters. You had five seconds left, so well done. The next person who previously let us know they wanted to speak will be Jerry Bustamante, Manager of Public Affairs.
I'm now Chair. Members of the Board, good afternoon. My name is Jerry Bustamante. I am with HUDB, and on behalf of our company and the Copper World Project, I want to thank the Board of Appeals for taking quick action to consider ratification of their decision that was the subject of the recent court decision. Now, our application has always included the construction of pipelines for the transportation of freshwater, processed water, and tailings. Now, it is unfortunate, the mistake that did not affect the value of the right-of-way, and we respectfully request that the Board of Appeals ratify their prior action. I am available today to answer any questions you may have, and with me today is our attorney, Norman James, who can also answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bustamante. The only other person I see with a hand up is Mr. Harvey Schulman. If you would like to unmute, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I think my letter that I sent this morning explains it all, but I just want to emphasize, I don't really understand how you can ratify something you never did. All you did previously was approve an appraisal for a right-of-way that focused only on transmission lines and a couple of water lines and that sort of thing. You never previously voted to approve an appraisal of a right-of-way that was stated to cover a tailings pipeline. So I'm not sure how, in light of the statute, you can ratify something you never did before. And that's explained in more detail in my letter. My second point is in response to the Chair's comment about environmental determinations. I realize that you are not deciding whether to issue the right-of-way permit. But the reality is that the, any appraisal of the land has to take some account of its use and what the use will be during the term of use and afterwards, because that affects the value of the land now and in the future. And I'm not, my letter points out, you should not be making any specific environmental determinations, but the own questionnaire, which asks a number of environmental questions, I pointed out that the answers in the questionnaire are just false, and they're incomplete. And so you have an appraisal that you're dealing with, which doesn't even recognize there are some environmental risks. Not that you should say something is going to happen or not going to happen, but there are risks out there, and that does affect valuation. So I'm going to rely on my letter. Thank you very much for listening to me. I know these are somewhat technical points, but they really go to the substance of what you're legally permitted to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see anybody else with a raised hand on the virtual platform. I don't know, Nina, if there's anybody in the boardroom that wants to speak.
I don't show anybody.
Then I am going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting and open it up for discussions, discussion and questions amongst the Board.
I would add one other thing. Other than Harvey's in-call messages, I don't see any other in-call messages that would need to be addressed. I just want to have a clear record that I didn't see anybody else that jumped in and said, besides raising a hand, that they had another comment. So just to clarify that portion of it. Thank you.
Thanks. Members of the Board, do you want to, do you have any questions? Do we want to have any discussion?
I'm ready to make a motion if I could.
Travis, did you? I wasn't sure if you were. I don't, I don't mean just to plant a motion, Rick. I just wasn't sure if Travis was going to ask some questions.
And I have some questions. I'm just trying to figure out if they need to be in executive session or not. So what would the protocol be if we wanted to jump to executive session?
If that is your desire, a motion, and we'll see if it's seconded to go into executive session.
It would be for the, excuse me, Madam Chair, if I may clarify, as I understand it, Mr. Bard, you would be wanting to take a motion in a second to possibly go into executive session for the purposes of receiving legal advice? Is that correct?
It is, yes.
Okay. And to Nina's point, if we have questions of the State Land Department, that would happen in open session if we want legal advice. I am happy to entertain a motion.
Chairman, this is Ned Chapel. I move that we move to executive session for legal advice.
I would second that motion. This is Travis. I would second the motion.
Nina, do you want to do a roll call?
Chairperson Sylvan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chapel?
Aye.
Mr. Bard?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Okay. So for purposes of Board members, we are exiting this meeting. For those of you who are here, for the public, we'll be back as soon as we're done in exec, and there is a separate link, Board members, to go into for exec. You all have it, right? Awesome. We'll see you in a minute, and to the members of the public, we'll be, we'll be back soon.
Okay. I'm ending the recording.
Okay, Chairperson Sylvan, I can start the recording.
It's hard to start a meeting when you're muted. I apologize. I have 3:14 on my clock. We'll go ahead and restart the public meeting. Nina, do you want to call roll?
Chairperson Sylvan?
Aye. I mean, here.
Vice Chair Chapel?
Here.
Mr. Bard?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
He is frozen again. Give it, Nina, I think he's going to come back in. Okay. Nina, you want to call Mr. Cole?
Mr. Cole?
Just got back on. Sorry about that. The system dropped me.
Okay.
All right, we're all here.
Thank you. So at this point, I think we can either entertain a motion, ask some questions. I do have some questions, but I wasn't sure if anybody else from the Board wants to say anything first. All right, I'm going to ask my question, possibly inartfully, but I'm going to ask it. So, and it's probably a question for State Land Department, but as we look at the right-of-way recommendation that was before us in 2022, and then take a look at the court proceedings and then the appraisal, one of the questions that I have is the question of what was in that easement, the tailings pipeline was obviously the question that was before the court, and what I'd like to understand is how that does or does not affect the appraisal and particularly the recommendation sheet that was put before us.
Thank you, Chairman Sylvan. I think I can answer that for you. So additional pipelines or any other additional uses would have no effect on appraisal. So the appraisal was done for highest and best use for the property. The appraisal amount was $9,500 per acre, and the appraisal doesn't actually consider the uses. It's just a tool to establish the value. The department then applies an intensity of use factor to the appraisal. In this particular case, they used an intensity of use of 99%, meaning virtually all of the property. By virtue of there being an overhead road, there could be almost no other uses allowed on the property. And if I'm going too far in answering a question you didn't ask, let me know. The department then applies a term factor to the value, which is also not a concern of value or the appraisal. It's just to calculate the amount that's paid for the use of the land during a period of time.
Thank you. And that is, that is the way that the State Land Department generally values rights-of-way. And I'm framing this as a question, even though it's sounding as a statement, in all other rights-of-way, there was nothing unusual about the approach, everything that I'm reading so far.
There was nothing unusual about the approach. This was a routine right-of-way request, and it was processed just as any other right-of-way request would have been processed, with the exception of, probably should have added some more information to the, to the agenda, according to the court. We didn't do that, but it wouldn't have had any effect on the value or the calculation of the amount due from the applicant upon granting of the right-of-way.
Thank you, Had. Does anyone else have any questions or care to make a motion? Ned and Richard Cole have both raised their hand. So Ned, you want to go first?
There we go.
You're on mute.
My computer keeps telling me that, too. It must hear me talking, and it knows it's not going out. Anyway, I just want to ask, Jim, probably yours good to answer this as anybody, but in going through the appraisal and the contract, you know, letter contracting for the appraisal, there's, there's nothing included in the appraisal, and I know Tom well, it would have been included in his addenda. You don't, did you provide him with the request for right-of-way from the mining company? Because there's, there's no mention of it in there, other than that's where it's going for, you know, Rosemont Copper, application number and all that, but they don't, they don't, he would have never had the detail without that application. Anyway, I'm guessing, or asking, do you guys ever provide those detail sheets of the application to the appraisers?
We don't provide those to the appraiser. They don't have an effect on the value that the appraiser would derive. The appraisers in the praising, the uses, the appraiser is praising, is appraising the value at its highest and best use.
Yeah. Value of the real estate only. Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Cole? Go ahead.
Thank you. And I would also point out that what we approved back then was a 30-year term, that it wasn't a perpetual use. So there was an adjustment by the State Land Department of approximately 61% reflecting that it was not a permanent use. Some of the correspondence that I read questioned why the value was reduced down to 64,000 from the, there was some number, and I'm sorry, it escapes me, but looking at the sheet, it's clear that it was not a permanent use and that at the end of 30 years, if they wanted to continue the use, they would have to renegotiate or do something else regarding the right-of-way. So that's something that, I think there was some confusion on some of the people that looked at it and didn't understand why there was lesser value in this particular case. And I just thought I would clarify that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Cole. And I also want to clarify that appraisal value wasn't reduced. This was simply a calculation of the cost of right-of-way.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions, care to make a motion? Go ahead, Mr. Cole.
I would move that we ratified the Board's December 8, 2022 action approving the Rosemont Copper Right-of-Way valuation as stated in the Department's Right-of-Way section recommendation sheet presented to the Board prior to the action.
Is there a second?
Isn't Ned Chapel allowed second?
Okay, so the motion is to ratify the December 2022 action. If there's no further discussion, we'll do roll call.
Chairperson Sylvan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chapel?
Aye.
Mr. Bard?
No.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries three to one with Mr. Bard voting no. That is the only item on this agenda. So I will, it's 3:23, and I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.